Good morning, everybody. It is 10:01. It is Tuesday, June 30th, 2020. We are here for the special meeting of the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners. And with that, can I get, please join me in a salute to the flag this morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Of course. Bob Lucy Chair?
Here.
Vice Chair Marsha Burke Bigler?
Here.
Kitty Jung?
Present.
Via phone call. Vaughn Hartung?
Commissioner Hartung, are you with us? And I don't see the camera on.
It won't start.
Okay.
I believe he's present via Zoom.
Yep.
Jeanne Herman?
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Assistant DA David Watzvial via Zoom. I believe he's present via Zoom. And I'm Jan Galacini, Chief Deputy County Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we are on to our first public comment. Mr. Manager, item three.
Yes, item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment this morning?
We do. We have two people signed in. First, I will call Wendy Pitts, and she submitted an email.
All right, will you read Mrs. Pitts's email into the record, please?
Of course. My name is Wendy Pitts. I was Washoe County Property Program Fiscal Control 2020. I was cyber stalked and targeted for multiple days by Brent Torvinnian, user and friend of Bellman Golf, vendor of the taxpayers-owned and funded Washoe Golf Course. This cyber stalking was encouraged and enabled against this disabled resident by a group of vigilante thugs, cops, and donors of commissioners Jung and Burke Bigler. Washoe County elected officials, management, and Bellman Golf committed hate crimes against this resident due to her full awareness of my disability since Washoe County caused it. My disability was directly caused by the 16 years of intentionally infliction of emotional abuse and threats from corrupt politicians, the Washoe County Management Team, and Washoe County Civil Attorneys, who year after year ordered me to facilitate felony bribes and illegal property transfers. Nowhere in my job description or employment agreement did I agree to commit felony acts for criminals. Two weeks ago, I made public records requests for my personnel file and emails related to my reporting of the judicial bribe I was ordered to do by Schiller, Budge, Solero, and Liberelli, made by Harry Reed to buy a judge seat for David Humke. Those emails have been identified over a week ago but not released to me yet by Washoe County. I am requesting those emails are released today.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next email?
Next up, we have an email from Elise Weatherly. Says, "I'm watching what is happening in Milwaukee, and I actually understand it. I had an ex-husband who died with meth in his bloodstream that I had to take some action on one evening when he was drunk. Long story, but what I see taking place as the winnowing fork is being fully utilized is that some of us are actually seeing that there are good guys and there are bad guys, and they're working together. The druggies and alcoholics are winning because those who truly want to do what is right are being opposed and persecuted. Does this sound like any documentation anyone has read? It's time to take sides. It's time to put away the PC faces and responses and do something."
Madam Clerk, I'm gonna put us on recess, and we're gonna have to redo this because our Zoom is not working. They have no audio or visual, and so until we can get that back up and running, I can't conduct the meeting because it wouldn't be public. So we are going to put ourselves in recess for the time being.
Noted. We are in recess.
Trying to restart it because it's airing out on the computer.
Yeah, now, but the camera's not working on the Polycom. So Jeff and I are target shooting. You have any ideas or are you close?
Ask him. You have another question?
Oh, okay. Is there another Polycom? Oh, go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, I did that. I just restarted it.
It's got power to it, so you can hear it come on.
It was coming up with a driver error. Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah, restarting.
Okay, we're back. All right, yeah, just put the normal target shooter power down, power back up.
This is Dave Watzvial. I have audio and video at this point.
Commissioner Hartung, are you with us?
I am.
Great, great. All right. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll come back from, bring us back from recess. We were experiencing some technical issues. So what we will do is go back and reread our public comments. So Mr. Manager, can you please, actually even what I'd like to do is a reroll call, Madam Clerk, and make sure that we have all of our commissioners in attendance.
Perfect. Bob Lucy Chair?
Here.
Vice Chair Marsha Burke Bigler?
Here.
Kitty Jung?
Present.
Via phone. Vaughn Hartung?
I'm here, but the volume is really low.
Okay, via Zoom. Jeanne Herman?
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown?
Here.
Assistant District Attorney David Watzvial?
Here.
Via Zoom. And I'm Jan Galacini, Chief Deputy County Clerk. Sir, you do have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. And staff, can we, can we get the microphone moved closer to the Polycom? And then, okay, so with that, Mr. Manager, can we go back to item three, sir?
Yes. Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comments limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right, Madam Clerk, we have two emails submitted to us. Can you please read those into the record?
We do. First up is Wendy Pitts. Start your time. My name is Wendy Pitts. I was Washoe County Property Program Fiscal Control Manager, February 2020. I was cyber stalked and targeted for multiple days by Brent Torvinnian, user and friend of Bellman Golf, the vendor of the taxpayer-owned and funded Washoe Golf Course. This cyber stalking was encouraged and enabled against this disabled resident by a group of vigilante thugs, cops, and donors of commissioners Jung and Burke Bigler. Washoe County elected officials, management, and Bellman Golf committed hate crimes against this resident due to their full awareness of my disability since Washoe County caused it. My disability was directly caused by the 16 years of intentionally infliction of emotional abuse and threats from corrupt politicians, the Washoe County Management Team, and Washoe County Civil Attorneys, who year after year ordered me to facilitate felony bribes and illegal property transfers. Nowhere in my job description or employment agreement did I agree to commit felony acts for criminals. Two weeks ago, I made public records requests for my personnel file and emails related to my reporting of the judicial bribe I was ordered to do by Schiller, Budge, Solero, and Liberelli, made by Harry Reed to buy a judge seat for David Humke. Those emails have been identified over a week ago but not released to me by Washoe County. I am requesting those emails are released today. And next up, we have Ms. Elise Weatherly, but via email. "I'm watching what is happening in Milwaukee, and I actually understand it. I had an ex-husband who died with meth in his bloodstream, and I had to take some action one evening when he was drunk. Long story, but what I see taking place is the winnowing fork is being fully utilized is that some of us are actually seeing that there are good guys and there are bad guys, and they are working together. The druggies and alcoholics are winning because those who truly want to do what's right are being opposed and persecuted. Does this sound like any documentation anyone has read? It's time to take sides. It's time to put away the PC faces and respond and do something about what's wrong. If someone I worked with was falsely accused of things, I would stand up for them. I did that at the Eldorado. I stood for those who were doing their jobs and stood against those who weren't. Unfortunately, the ones in power were the bad guys, and so it made doing my job very difficult, to say the least. My ex-husband would have been given accolades if the same thing happened to him. I would get spit on. My daughter is cuddled and cooed by the authorities in this community, and I'm getting slandered. What a wonderful world. Elise Weatherly."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate it. Do we have anybody via Zoom that would like to have public comment this morning? Seeing none. All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we are on to item four, sir.
Item four is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commission updates, requests for information, or topics of future agendas.
All right. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Couple of things. I do want to remind the commissioners and let the public know that our July meeting schedule, we will, we will have a Board of County Commissioners meeting on July 19th, I'm sorry, July 14th and the 21st. And then we will take a hiatus until August 18th and the 25th. So this is the normal summer break schedule that we take, and please note your calendars accordingly. Secondly, I'd like to acknowledge the Truckee Meadows Fire District for their efforts over the weekend in battling the Poeville Fire. Chief Moore and his team did a great job, I think, at limiting the damage to the eight structures that were affected. I want to thank him for also staying in touch over the weekend so we could make sure that the county's resources were coordinated. And also like to thank 311, which took many of the calls from the, from folks being affected by evacuations, and of course, the Red Cross for their work in making sure people had a place to stay who wanted it that evening. And then finally, I just want to acknowledge that, given the governor's message yesterday extending Phase Two through the end of July, the county will extend our current policies in terms of our workforce through the end of July as well. Mr. Chair, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. You know, I want to make, take a few seconds here really quick. It has been a busy last five days we've experienced here, not only in the state but in Washoe County. You know, obviously, on Thursday, the governor came out with the mask directive that would go into effect on Friday morning. And, you know, this is not something to be toyed with. This is not something to laugh at. This is not something to fight against. We are still in the midst of this pandemic. It is, if you've looked at our numbers and you've seen in the last couple of weeks, our numbers have grown exponentially, not only here in Washoe County but also in Clark County, in the two most populated counties in the state. And we have, yes, our hospitalizations are at the current time stable. Yes, our mortality rate is at the current time stable, but the governor is very serious. Governor Sisalak is very serious that if we do not mandate and continue to stick to the mask mandate and wear the masks and respect the masks, there will be consequences, and he is not afraid to roll back to a state where we would close back down to businesses and different things of that nature. This is not something we need to continue to toy with. I think this is something that we need to continue to take seriously. This is not, many people's lives are at stake because individuals just choose not to wear masks. So please, from my, from myself, please, wear your mask, do it religiously. It's not that hard. It's very easy to wear. You're not, it's not impeding your daily life. You still have, you can still live a normal, normal life with just wearing a mask while you're out in public amongst people. So please do so. And with that, I will turn it over to my fellow commissioners. Commissioner Herman, I had you sign in first.
Thank you. I'm gonna take this mask down just for my few minutes here. I have given the clerk a email study of, or record, for the record, of my attempts to get a place for people to shoot. And we have the whole thing down in black and white and blue and purple. So I just wanted to say that now it's up to us to decide if we can release one parcel from that, you know, that area that has been restricted. And we have the power to do that and create a safety net for shooters. So that's all we have left to do. We can lease or we can purchase that property according to BLM. So that part's been done. And then I wanted to also, since it was in my district, a special thanks to our amazing, brave firefighters. They saved us from disaster once again. A nice little thank you note to whoever did the work on Mr. Archer's ditch. He was so grateful, and he said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," for an excellent job on his ditch. So that's good news. I just wanted to mention there's another ditch that overflowed and flooded a great number of people, causing us to ask for, or to call for an emergency action. That was in July of 2015. That ditch is needing work again. So it's in Lemon Valley above Oregon. So just a little thank you for one and asking for a favor for the other one. And then I have a letter, email from another constituent. And it says, "Greetings, Commissioner Herman. I am reaching out to you to find out why the company Get Rattled cannot come to Washoe County and train on rattlesnake avoidance. Please respond to me with the details so that I have a better understanding. I would like to know what roadblocks are keeping them from helping to protect our fur families. Albeit, who is available to assist us at this time? We are in dire need of help in the North Valleys after multiple sightings of rattlesnakes. Thank you for your time." So that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Madam Vice Chair, do you have anything? All right, Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How's my volume?
Your volume is good. Can you hear us?
Yes, yeah, it's still a little low, but it's better.
Okay.
So just a couple of things. Thank you. I appreciate it. This afternoon, at 2 o'clock, on the, the information can be found on the Truckee Meadows Water Authority's website. We have a water resource plan, public outreach for 2020 through 2040. And it's a Zoom outreach, and I invite anyone and everyone to attend and listen in. And then sadly, we had a vehicle versus pedestrian accident with a fatality on Pyramid and Dolores. I've already asked staff to try to pull some information on this to determine if there's some things that the county needs to be doing. But proactively, I'd like to get us involved along with RTC and NDOT. The corridor through this section of Spanish Springs where you have Aldis Residential, it's just, it's a dangerous corridor. This happened to happen at night, which compounds the issue. So I don't know whether we need an agenda item yet, but I just wanted to let people know that we are looking at this. I'm going to ask for NDOT to do a road safety audit, or an RSA, or an RSS, a road safety study, to look at the corridor essentially from the library all the way out through the end of the valley north. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. And I am receiving nothing from Commissioner Jung other than she is listening and here participating, so she didn't, no need to speak this morning. All right, so Mr. Manager, we will close. Commissioner County Manager, and we will move on to item five.
Item five is a recommendation to approve and execute the resolution levying tax rates for all Washoe County entities for fiscal year 2020 to 2021.
All right, Mr. Manager. And who will be presenting for this this morning? Ms. Valetich?
Oh, I'm sorry. Lori Cook here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Lori. How are you? Good morning, Ms. Cook.
Hi, I'm good, thank you. This is, I don't want to call it housekeeping. It's obviously important. But this is the, this resolution allows, has the board levy the tax rates, which then enables the Treasurer's Office to send the tax bills. It's not just Washoe County. It's all Washoe County entities, so the school district, fire districts, anybody, or any entity, rather, that receives property tax. And the, excuse me, Treasurer needs this levied in a certain amount of time so that the bills can be prepared and printed and sent out in a timely manner. So property owners have the adequate amount of time to pay.
Okay, great.
And that, sorry, and the Tax Commission did certify the rates last week on June 25th. And per statute, the board cannot execute the resolution until the Tax Commission has certified the next fiscal year rates.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. That's exactly what I wanted to get on the record, is why we were having a special meeting on June 30th today. Are there any questions by any of the commissioners in regards to the staff in front of you? Commissioner Jung, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Hartung?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. I read the staff report and understand it completely.
Great. All right, and seeing nothing from my fellow commissioners joining here, here in the chambers with me. At this time, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Madam Vice Chair?
I move to approve and execute the resolution levying tax rates for all of Washoe County entities for fiscal year 2020 through 2021.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion from Madam Vice Chair, second from Commissioner Hartung. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Okay, is there any public comment from Zoom? All right, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board and call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries with four commissioners voting in the affirmation and Commissioner Herman in the opposition. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Commissioner Jung and Commissioner Hartung voting remotely via Zoom and telephone. All right, we are on to item six. Mr. Manager?
Item six is a possible closed session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations with Washoe County and/or Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District under NRS 228.220. If necessary, staff recommends a motion to recess for a closed-door session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations with Washoe County, Truckee Meadows Management Representatives pursuant to NRS 288.220. At the conclusion of the closed session, the meeting will be, then be adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, it's my understanding that we do need a, we do need a closed public, closed labor session today. Looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair?
I would make a motion that we go into recess as soon as we're done with our business here, so that we can do the closed session.
Okay, I have a motion for a closed labor session. Do I have a second?
Second, Hartung.
All right, I've got a second. A motion from Madam Vice Chair, second from Commissioner Hartung. Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Seeing no public comment, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. And so we will be in, we will go to a closed public session, closed labor session after we convene the remainder of our business here today. So what we'll do is we're gonna go into item eight, Mr. Manager, which is our final county manager's announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything else?
Nothing further.
Commissioners, is there any, anything else that anybody would like to add this morning on the public record? Commissioner Hartung?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Jung?
No, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a final, do you want to do final public comment here?
We do have a voicemail, I believe, for final public comment.
Okay, let's do final public comment. We'll open public comment. Mr. Manager?
Item number seven, public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, it shows that you have a voicemail, public comment.
We do. Anne Marie Grant.
All right. I can see it, but we're not getting any audio. Can we start, can we start that over, please?
Anne Marie Grant for the record, Washoe County Commissioner Meeting, June 30th, 2020. Agenda item seven. During my time, I'd like you to all listen to what my brother went through at the jail when he was asphyxiated after being hard-timed by Reno PD for 40 minutes and then dumped at the jail. at the jail. I hear that every day, every waking moment of my life. Please do your job and let's hold our elected officials, including yourself and the Washoe Sheriff, accountable. Thank you.
All right, and we, it looks like we have a, um, public comment via Zoom? All right, and I have Rebecca via Zoom.
Do you guys hear me?
Are you there with us? Yes, we can hear you. All right.
My name's Rebecca Marco, for the record, I'm a resident in Cold Springs. Um, Cold Springs is this really awesome community that, I mean, I don't, I guess a lot of people don't hear about. Um, we're like a big family out here, except for unfortunately, we're starting to get increasingly worried about our Citizen Advisory Board Member, Kenji Otto. Um, he's had a history of posting public racist comments and everything like, and, like, really awful things. He's since deleted them. However, he has a history of harassing different community members, and it's getting to the point where, like, many of us are getting concerned. Um, I think it was last week or the week before, a community member actually had to call the police on him, and it's gotten to the point where we are living in fear, we don't feel welcome to go to the Citizen Advisory Meetings anymore, um, and it's almost like, it almost feels like we're in a hostile environment, and when we are told, when we've reached out, we've been told that he's a good representative of our area, and unfortunately, I don't want to be associated with somebody who has posted openly racist racial slurs and stuff like this, and having him being our representative makes our amazing neighborhood look and sound awful. And that's just not how it is. We're an amazing family, a caring family, um, we have a bunch of amazing, um, community members from all walks of life, and we all come together, and having this one person be our voice is scary, because we are an amazing community. And, um, I just wanted to possibly ask that you guys please consider looking at NRS to see how to possibly remove him, because this is, we don't feel safe. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca, we appreciate it. And Rebecca, can you state your name for the record one more time, please?
Rebecca Marco.
Marco, thank you. All right, do we have another public comment? We do have one more. Bonnie. All right, Bonnie, we have your mic unmuted, and you, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, Bonnie, can you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Bonnie Wilker.
All right, Bonnie, thank you. Uh, Bonnie, can you spell your last name, Wilker?
It's V as in Victor, A-L-K-E-R.
Wilker, okay, thank you. Bonnie, the floor is yours, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to add on to what, uh, Becky had said. I actually started a petition, uh, to remove Kenji, it has several hundred signatures on it. Um, in addition to, um, the comments that he has made, uh, I do believe they were about two years old, um, he keeps pushing the unincorporated town, he has been going door-to-door to people's, uh, houses with business cards, um, with a link to a website for the unincorporated town. It does have a county logo, I don't believe it's the official logo, but it, there is a county logo on there, so it's very misleading. Um, he just recently, with the neighbor who had to call the cops, uh, he reported a violent homeless encampment on her property, which was not true, there were, um, employees doing some work, uh, on her property, and with that, he didn't just cause the problem and the sheriffs had to come out, he did have a firearm on him when that happened, and, uh, he kept putting his hand on it to, to show some, some intimidation, according to the resident on that property, as well, as he refused to speak to the owner of the company because they were Hispanic, and would only speak to the white, um, to the white, uh, driver that was not in charge of the job. So, these i-issues that we're having with him are ongoing, they're just not put out there in public like they were before on Twitter and Facebook, because he has since deleted those social media accounts, but he is still behaving in this way in the community. And I would like for Janine Herman to go on record and state why this has been tolerated, because in the past, we have just been told to find common ground with him, and unfortunately, you cannot find common ground with somebody who is unreasonable.
All right, Bonnie, thank you. Does this conclude your comments?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you so much for joining us today. All right, is there any further public comment this morning?
I have nobody signed in.
Okay, nothing signed in, nothing further. Um, we can reopen eight briefly, um, if there's any Commissioners that would like to make any comments in regards to the public comment that was offered today. Um, I jumped the gun a little bit. Um, Commissioner Herman?
Yes, sir. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I found, um, this gentleman to be extremely American. He is a half-Japanese person, and I never experienced any, um, racist attitude about him. Um, he's worked hard in doing what he did. Um, he worked so hard that he has had a stroke, and now is, has resigned from the cab, and, um, I think he'll be a great loss, and we will miss him. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Commissioner Herman. Uh, you know, one of the things that I would probably recommend that we look at, um, in regards to the appointments of the boards, and whether that's Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, any board that this Commission appoints individuals to, of general public, to sit at a capacity, um, in a leadership role in a capacity, I think we need to find that there's a, we've, if there's a way that we can look at tolerance of the individual's sense, specifically, if a individual that's appointed to this board, or a board that we, that we point to, if they, um, post, um, things of intolerance on, uh, social media, or make statements in the public, or have allegations of intolerance, I think those are discussions that this board should be able to have, and if those, if those are valid, uh, and we can, and we can suitably understand that, I think we should be able to have the ability to remove people from those boards, um, because those people are not representative of this county, and not representative of who we are as a community, and shouldn't be tolerated any further. So, that would be something, Mr. Manager, I would like for this commi-Commission to look into, if we have that capability with the DA's office. We have removed Commissioners.
Back to us.
From Commissioner, uh, Planning Commissioners before for actions they've taken in regards to posting things about, uh, agenda items well before a vote is even taken, but I think this, 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 they'll, goes right up there as well, with the ability that if individuals make those statements publicly, then we have that ability to remove those individuals. All right, and you got a Commission discussion, Commissioner Jung, did you want to jump in there?
I second what you say.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Hartung, did you have anything further?
I do, Mr. Chairman, and I, I agree wholeheartedly, these are representatives of the county in our community, and so what I'd like the DA to do is bring back a, um, an, an option, a policy that we can potentially create, uh, in order to, um, deal with issues like this. There is no place for it, uh, there's, there's, uh, absolutely no appropriate time for this, and so, I, I couldn't agree more with you, sir. I, I think that, that, uh, at their earliest opportunity, the, the DA bring back, uh, something for us, and we adjust our, our policies and procedures with respect to these, uh, boards that we appoint. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I totally agree also, and I think we are going to be, um, having a cab discussion in the not-too-distant future on one of our agendas, and so, perhaps this is a time that we could, um, put that into our whole overall cab program as we start looking at, so, I hope that the District Attorney will get back to us and let us know exactly how we can handle this, because I, I totally agree, if somebody's posting stuff publicly, as Commissioner Hartung said, they're representative of us, and we want to make sure that they are representing us in a fair and equitable manner, and not saying something negative against our citizens. That is not our county. Thank you.
All right. So, I think staff got plenty of direction on that, there's no further comments, so we will clu-uh, close item eight. Uh, we are gonna go into recess for our closed labor session, so ladies and gentlemen, we'll be in recessed for our labor session, and we will adjourn from there. Thank you very much.